You are watching Access LaPorte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is July 25th, 2022 meeting of the LaPorte County Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot accesslaporte county dot org.
Good evening. I'm going to call the regular LaPorte County Council regular meeting for July 25th, 2022 to order. When we're done with the pledge, if everybody could stand for a moment of silence for Andrew McGuire, our EMS Director's mother, pass away.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, Mr. Audit.
Councilman Cunningham. Councilwoman Graham Marosa.
President.
Councilman Garner.
Here.
Councilman Mullenauer.
Present.
Councilman Rosenbaum.
Present.
Councilman Yagowski.
Present.
And Councilman Nomack.
Present.
All seven present.
Thank you. Approval of the July 25th, 2022 minute agenda for tonight?
I'd like to make a motion to make the following changes to the agenda under new business. I'd like to add number three, under consider approval of council president's authorization to hire replacement positions for the LaPorte County Clerk. It is a full-time deputy clerk position in Michigan City. Then in addition, in a separate line, we're looking for a motion of support for a three-year insurance policy of $90,000. And because it was not advertised timely, we want to get the motion of support on there. Thank you. So a motion to move the agenda forward with those corrections.
Is there any other corrections or additions? Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second. A motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, second by Mr. Mullenauer. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Approval of the July 27th, 2022 meeting minutes. June. What I say?
You said July. I accept.
June. Let's do June, since we're making Julys right now. Thank you. Stand corrected.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mrs. Graham Marosa.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cunningham. On the question, if you're none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Public comment. Public comment is now open. Anybody from the public would like to speak?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Brett Kelly Senior, Michigan City, Indiana. I'm here to address the council of LaPorte County about getting an hiring ordinance here in the county of LaPorte. I think it's been long overdue. I've spoken with some council members and said that they would not foresee any problem in passing perhaps a resolution to the same. And I just want to say, pretty much a lifelong resident of LaPorte County, and I would like to see the county reflect more of the county population, demographics. And just to, and when, and if this resolution is passed, we'll get together and we could go over some data. But there's just some things that I would like to call to my council's attention about racial inequality. You know, it costs, and these are studies. It costs the United States about 2.1 trillion lost in GDP every year, just about the size of California's economy, which is the eighth largest in the world. Okay? That's racial inequality. Then we go down and I say this to the council, we know the makeup approximately of blacks and Hispanics and whites in the county. There's about 12, eleven and a half, 12% black in the county, think about four and a half Hispanic. I think that LaPorte County needs to take a stand, especially for a region of this size. We need to oil that engine and grease that engine of diversity to be a more prosperous county and a more inclusive county. So I come before you guys asking for that resolution.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anybody else from the public?
Good evening. Brett Kessler, LaPorte County. I come to you tonight as a member of the LaPorte County Ag Association. I'm currently vice president of that board. Some of my other chair people cannot be here tonight, but as we've just wrapped up LaPorte County Fair and wanted to pass along the compliments to the council for the funds that we've put into the fairgrounds over the last four or five years. I know the first few years, a lot of people didn't see what was going on between the water, the electric sewer, but 61 years of use out there had its wear and tear, and we're making a change. The compliments were outstanding, uniformity in the building paint, the new asphalt, things people could actually finally see. So it's overdue since we've been doing this for four or five years, and I apologize for us not getting up here sooner to thank you all for what you've done out there. But I know Jeremy's here in the back, but that fairgrounds is one of our big county parks as well. We work in partnership with FMEC, the Ag Association, and the council. So just wanted to take the time to thank you all for everything we've done out there and the plans going forward in the future. So thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? Anybody else from the public? Anybody on Zoom? Anybody on Zoom? Anybody else from the public?
Mr. President, I'd like to make one comment before we move on as a result of Mr. Kessler being here. I know he's busy and finally got some rain, finished up the fair, and he told me last week during the fair that he felt it was important to communicate with the council and that he would be here. I want to thank him for keeping that promise. I also heard him on the radio show at noon today, and he and Mr. Rosenbaum did a very good job there as well.
I agree. I don't think that the county and the Ag Association and FMEC have worked better in the history of, probably of the fair, 176 years. So appreciate all you guys do. Any other public comments? There are none, public comments now closed. Department heads? Any department heads?
Good evening, council. Larry Levandowski, Facilities Director. I'm coming up for you as departments, because we didn't get pricing in for some of the work that needed to be done on the buildings. We have a couple of issues with our buildings, one being over here at the complex. We have a couple of windows that have cracked, one being on the fourth floor and one being on the third floor. They're cracked on the outside. It's hard to tell exactly how they've cracked, but they're in dire need of getting replaced. And one of the reasons I'm coming for you now, we found out the pricing, but it's almost a seven-week order time. I'm hoping I can get a motion of approval so we can start ordering the materials for that. The other one is that our community corrections, we have on our chiller, we have a couple of units that are compressors that are down on that. And again, those are some long lead time to get these compressors. One is completely down, the other one is at the end of its life cycle. And in order to change it out, you have to get a complete crane system built inside there to pull both of those units out. So we'd like to get both of those done at one time instead of spending money to come back and do one later. The first one, the windows, was not to exceed $20,000, and then we got a price, that price came from Meyer Glass. The second one was from DA Dodd. They were at just under $35,000. So like I said, I'd like to get a motion of support to at least get the materials going, and then I can come back for a final approval at next meeting.
So one of these windows was broken a couple months ago, correct? Because I'm the liaison for Coroner's Office, and that was broken a couple months ago.
Okay. We reached out to the window people. It's been a struggle to get anybody to get in here and give us pricing. We've reached out to three window companies, and one company gave us a price back. That was Meyer Glass.
So the only thing I'd like to say is, I mean, when you look at all the other department heads, they put it on the agenda, they're, it's transparent, it's publicized. The idea that we're coming under department head on a window that's been broken, I don't know about the other situations, you know, the other window, but I think that it should be advertised the same way that all the other department heads do it.
As I said, we just got, and I can show you the date that I got the quote back from them. So it's, we did not have that until after.
Just for correction, when he comes with the final amount, it will be advertised. It has to be advertised for us to spend the money. He's asking for a motion of support, is that correct?
Just a motion of support to get the materials.
So that he can proceed, finalize the bidding process or whatever, and then still move forward with it, so.
I make a motion of support to allow Larry to go ahead with the windows.
You have a motion by Mr. Gardner.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mullenauer.
I got a question.
Is there any other question? Go ahead.
You said $35,000 for the community corrections, right?
Right. That was, we've reached out to three other companies. Only one has gotten back to us on that, and we're still hoping to get the other two to reach back to us. If we don't, then we're going to have to move forward with the one that has.
And that was for both units out there?
Yes.
Thank you.
Is the window in the coroner's office the one that's cracked or the one that's broke?
No, that one's broken. That one's broken. Like I said, they were told us, I called today to ask, and he said, we're looking at anywhere from five to seven week lead time on the glass right now.
And we believe that happened because of the bridge? Something flew off the bridge?
We're thinking a rock hit it or something. To break it like that, you know, it's hard to say though. It's very hard to say.
Mr. Yagowski. Yeah, there's no doubt about it. It looks like it got hit by, off of the rock off the bridge, but our insurance that we have are self-insured up to a certain amount, so this is a mute point on the insurance part. We couldn't claim enough.
Right.
Any other questions or comments?
So we're just going to have, you know, the whole idea that the rest of these individuals contact the auditor's office, and then they come in with their bids and everything, you know, is this just the exception that, you know, one department head doesn't have to do it like the rest of the department heads, or?
He's asking for a motion of support, just like somebody else's in the agenda is asking for a motion of support because they didn't make it to the auditor's office in time for it to be advertised.
But this was a broken window from a couple months ago.
And then another window broke, and then the other thing happened out there. So if the council doesn't want to do it, then don't spend them.
Yeah, I'll wait till next month if it's.
There's no favoritism here. There's no special accommodations.
I'm just stating a fact that we have several different.
I'd question the word fact, but that's just me, but.
I'm just stating that there are other departments here that they go ahead and they get on the agenda, and then we have situations where this was broken a couple months ago, and it wasn't put on our agenda. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
We do have another, uh, motion of support for Mrs. Nermody this evening.
Right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Any other department heads?
We only did one. It was only the windows. We didn't do both.
All right, Larry. I didn't realize the motion was just for the one, so.
Yeah, that's all we discussed.
Terry, your motion was just for the window?
I was just talking about the, this building here.
Oh, okay. All right. All right.
You want to do with the HVAC?
Yeah, now we got, we've got the chiller compressors over at the community corrections. We got that, we finally got a price back. Looks in, we reached out to three different companies, the original installer for that. We reached out to Circle R Mechanical and DA Dodd. DA Dodd, as of this time, is the only one that's finally gotten back to us with a price for, to replace those two. It's $34,000 and change. I'm requesting $35,000 not to exceed. We're hoping that one of the other ones this week will get back to us, but we've had this out for three weeks waiting for them to call, so.
When did you receive the DA Dods?
July 1st. They got back to us rather quick. Like I said, we're trying to get these other two to get us price back, so.
What's your pleasure on this one?
Motion to support.
Motion by Mr. Mullenauer.
Second.
Second by Mr. Rosenbaum.
Good question.
Mr. Yagowski.
I do understand, especially with the chillers, those things are not predictable, but if you get this information July 1st, you have everybody's email, just send it out.
Okay.
That way, even if it's not because of proper bidding, because we have to do emergency or whatever the terms may be, just send out to the council the date that you get to receive it. That way, there won't be a question of that.
I will.
Thank you, sir.
So that broke down in less than, in the last month?
Yes.
Okay.
And nobody's deeming this an emergency.
No.
Just asking for support to continue.
If it wouldn't be for how long it takes to get this material nowadays, it's become, everything's so hard to get. I mean, like I said, the glass is seven weeks out. These motors, you know, they're not even telling us how long it's going to take to get these compressors. I mean, so it's, and things are changing daily on prices.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Jeremy Sebecki from the Parks Department. I just wanted to update you on a couple things. The playground at Bloom is pretty much done. We're going to have a ribbon cutting on August 13th at 10 o'clock. So that's, you know, we're going to have prizes and games for the kids and stuff like that. So come out and see. I wanted to thank the Healthcare Foundation for funding the playground, the council for funding the parking lot, and then my foundation, Park Foundation, for funding the restroom. If you haven't been out there since this is done, it's really changed the look of that park and the visitation. We had an event there last weekend on a Sunday, and only five people had signed up, but she got out there and there were, the parking lot was completely full, and they all participated in the program, and so we had like 35 to 40 people that, you know, and then, you know, a lot of those people were out on trails. So I think the improvements, not just the playground, but the improvements of the restroom and paved parking, and then the look of that playground is bringing a lot of people out to Bloom. Our visitation is sure to go up, and we look to see that in the park counts here very soon, so. Also wanted to say, you know, that he talked, Brett talked about, you know, working together, and Randy talked about working together, and I think, I just want to say thanks to the Highway Department. They're helping us, they helped us out at the Seabird property. We're getting that ready to open up soon. They brought us some gravel today. The parking lot's getting done. And then also wanted to thank Larry and Doug for some more air conditioning work that they came out and did on a Friday before rentals at the Smith Hall. So thanks, thanks to that. So there's, there's a lot of, lot of, lot of work going on behind the scenes together that a lot of people don't see. And then, yeah, so I appreciate it, and thank you guys.
Thank you. Keep up the good job. Any other department heads? Mr. Bishop is on the agenda tonight for, he's just looking for council approval to apply for the.
Community Crossing.
Community Crossing grant.
It's part of the application. There's a commitment letter. I've come up to this board many times over the years for different commitment letters, and I think I was under appropriations, and I'm not asking for appropriation at this point. I'm just asking for a commitment letter.
Does anybody have an objection to, it's on the last page, LaPorte County Planner, Planning Director requesting commitment letter for Community Crossings Grant?
President, make a motion to approve the letter tonight at the meeting right now?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Yagowski, second by Mrs. Graham Marosa. Is there any other questions or comments? If you're none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you.
It's due like tomorrow, isn't it?
Wednesday, yeah.
Wednesday, yeah.
I'll get it from you.
Great, thank you. Any other department heads? Any other department heads? Any other department heads? Department heads now closed, Lee is on Mr. Cunningham.
No reports at this time. Excuse me, no reports at this time. I do have community corrections on the agenda later this evening.
Great, thank you. Mr. Yagowski.
Yes, thank you. So Friday night, approximately 30, somebody severed a AT&amp;T line. We lost communication through a lot of the southern part of LaPorte County and all Michigan City even suffered some loss. Took out the 800 megahertz system that we have in place. There's going to be some meetings, follow-up meetings to help understand this more, why we lost it, because there was some, we hooked it up originally. There was supposed to be some backup to a backup, but there apparently we had some failure. So like I said, we have some scheduled meetings the rest of this week on this issue, and I want to appreciate Darlene and Barb Houston and the Sheriff's Department for stepping up and helping us on this matter. And we took a bad situation and made it decent, worked out Saturday night. At 1:00 in the morning, we were totally back up.
Great.
Yep, one more thing, sure. This insurance that we have for, under Darlene IT, this is the cyber, we were cyber attacked, and it's the cyber insurance. This can be paid yearly instead of the 90,357. There is a 5% discount by paying at 3%, so it's a pretty substantial amount to pay for if we pay for it early, but it's up to the council, it's their choice. That's it.
And is that the three-year insurance policy?
Yes, it is.
That you were talking about?
Yes, it is.
Can I make a motion to approve?
It's under new business if you would like to. It's under new business.
Mr. Rosenbaum.
Well, we've already heard from the fair regarding FMEC. Attended the fair just about every day. It was a very excellent experience again for another year. Got to see a lot of youth, and it was a great opportunity to really see what goes on behind the scenes in several of the barns, so I'm going to share that part. We have an RDC meeting coming up on Wednesday. I attended a rail and maritime conference for once and probably not again. It was an experience in Chicago. Let's see, learned a lot about the rail and what their future plans are and stuff. We had MS4 out at the fairgrounds to help out in some areas and the parks we already heard from, so at that point, I'm going to end my.
Thank you. Let me real quick. I misspoke, excuse me, I've written down, but this is antivirus. It's not, it's not insurance, antivirus for, to stop it from being hacked. I apologize.
It's okay. Apology accepted. Mr. Gardner.
Well, this isn't probably going to be very popular, but I'm going to give a person his just due. If Mr. Friedman wouldn't have helped me with the FEMC to get it started, it would have never happened. So I want to give him kudos for helping me along with Randy and the former council, and we can see the results now that are happening because of it. So it's like, that is one major accomplishment in my 20 years that I am quite proud of, so thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Mrs. Graham Marosa?
I've talked to all of the different departments, but the only one that we had an issue with, and that was in the coroner's office, that a window had been broken several months ago, and apparently tonight we're addressing it. Other than that, all the other departments are running smooth.
Right. Mr. Mullenauer. Well, I'll just repeat, I guess, I'm complimenting the, everybody that was affiliated or involved with the LaPorte County Fair. It was another great LaPorte County Fair, well-attended, well, there couldn't have been more perfect, and I think it was enjoyed by, I know it was enjoyed by my family, I'm sure it was enjoyed by everybody. And just a couple other things. On July 5th, I attended a job evaluation committee meeting, and on the 7th, I attended interviews as we all did for the HR, human resource candidates, and I know tonight was going to be a executive session, but that was canceled, and I'm sure we'll get a new date on that. And one, two other things. Today, I attended our Community Correction Advisory Board meeting, but back on July 15th, I was able to attend the annual COPS Cycling for Survivors. I know when I was sheriff, we hosted it. The present sheriff, John Boyd, has hosted it many years also. It's just a terrific, terrific group of guys that cycle around the state for survivor, anybody, any fallen officers, and they'll make their stops at different locations and read an eulogy. The first place in LaPorte County, of course, was Neil Thompson's gravesite on that morning of July 5th. Captain Heineck read the eulogy. They then traveled across the county, had a little bit of a rain problem for a while, but they made several other stops that they hadn't ever made before. Different locations where two troopers, one trooper on Fail Road was killed many years ago in the 30s involving a bank robbery, and then Louis Phillips up at 39 and 20, when he was, I think, 11-month officer at the time when he was killed in a traffic accident. And then up on 12 for Marshall, can't think of his name.
Long Beach?
Oh, Long Beach.
Couch.
Couch. I'm sorry, Jim Couch. And then over to the state prison, where they honored and read an eulogy for correctional officer at that time, Lieutenant Eugene Glasgow, who lost his life last year. It was just a great honor to be there and see this, and I know it's going to continue many more years, at least I hope so. One person that I want to give a shout out to that's been involved for, I believe, 10 years now, and that's retired LaPorte County Sheriff's Office Captain Mike Kellums. He's volunteered for the past 10 years to participate and assist with biking. He travels with them with the trucks for carrying their supplies and that, and bicycles when they, spare bikes and all that. And he just, to do that for 10 years, and he just mentioned that this was his last year. He's going to give it up and give it to somebody else to have an opportunity to do that. So I just want to thank him for that, for all of that dedicated service. Thank you.
Thank you. I attended a drug-free partnership Zoom meeting. We had our mental health task force meeting here at the complex, animal control board meeting, RDC meeting, the FMEC meeting, and then, Terry, just for the correction, it's FMEC, but you can call it anything you want. And I also want to echo, the fair this year was so outstanding, and the people on the fair board, and I know there was a lot of perception in years ago that, oh, you know, they're all getting paid a lot of money and doing everything, so I just want to tell you that aside from Don Stoner getting a small stifle for being, I think, the manager out there, and then the office personnel, nobody else out there is getting paid. And the work, if you spend a lot of time out at the fairgrounds, that I do, I mean, in the off-season, and then all of a sudden, it's like bam, the fair is there, and then I'm here to tell you, within two days, it looked like nobody was out there. I mean, it's clean, everything's picked up. There's a little few things here and there that still need to be packed away, but what a tremendous undertaking if, to bring all that together, and they're doing it because they have the passion for it. They're not doing it for money. They're not, they're doing it because all that money goes back into the fair grounds, into their buildings. They're doing it right now to pay off the beef building. So the passion that's out there is absolutely incredible, and it's, I'm just glad to be a part of it. So everybody's doing a great job with the Ag Association, what 4H is doing out there, our maintenance department, FMEC, everybody. It's a great, because one of the promoters that was out there for the concert, I think it was the first night, said that LaPorte County has now surpassed Porter County as far as a venue for places to have things. So that's how impressed they were with everything that's out there, with the grandstands and the paved lot and everything else, so that's all I have. Move on to correspondence. Any correspondence?
We have none.
Thank you. Ordinances and reservations?
I did receive a correspondence, and I don't know if the rest of you did, but.
I believe we all received that correspondence, and it's not signed, so I would, I'm reluctant to read it out public if somebody's not able to write their name on it.
It would be inappropriate.
It would be absolutely inappropriate to read that.
We've never have, so.
So you can do what you want.
So you can do what you want. I believe everybody received the confidential letter?
No.
Yes.
Yes?
It was placed in our mailboxes, we were notified that it was placed.
Well, I think it should be read and just.
Full of accusations and nobody signed their name to it, so there's not, you don't know if there's an ounce of truth to that.
Well, what steps did we take when we got this letter? Was, as the president, I mean, did you take it to the?
It went to the judge. It addressed, the judge was in the, was, one of them went to the judge.
And so it's handled through the judge?
Went to the commissioners and the council and to the judge, and it's an employee in the judge's office.
Okay.
So yes, so, I mean, I'm not, I'm not, this is nothing against you, councilwoman, I just think it's.
I concur. We'd be hoping a tremendous can of worms if we're going to read every anonymous letter that we'd receive if we read this as a complaint against somebody.
And I know the judge received a copy, I'll follow up with the judge just to make sure that he's dealing with it in his capacity.
And then maybe you can follow up at the next meeting and tell us what.
I'll send everybody an email.
Thank you.
Ordinances and resolutions. None? Consider approval for council president's authorization to hire replacement positions for the La Porte County Highway Department operator position.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, second by Mr. Cunningham, is there any other questions? Very none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? La Porte County Community Corrections Residential Coordinator position?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Mullen, second by Mr. Rosenbaum. Any other questions on that one? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Next one is La Porte County Clerk, permission to hire full-time for Superior III clerk.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mullenhour.
It's a replacement.
It's a replacement. But here's the other thing that, and I had a discussion with the clerk the other day, she had originally come to us, she had another person that I think retired, and she thought she could replace that person with a part-time person. She wasn't able to find a part-time person, so she'd like to continue to fill that as a full-time. So I don't know that, I mean, so we're just going to add that on there, I told her I'd bring it up, she sent an email, so. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next one is the IT requesting a motion of support on the.
Antivirus.
Antivirus, thank you, Mr. Yagowski.
Motion to support.
Motion by Mrs. Graham Rosa.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cunningham. And this is.
For a three-year program.
For the 90,000, that's what this.
Yes, sir.
Right, okay. And then that'll be on our next agenda for funding. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? One last, and I don't know if this goes under new business or not, but we need to, while we're talking, when we get down to the end of the meeting, we'll have a conversation about rescheduling the HR exec session so that we can collectively come up with a date, so be looking for something. I'm sure the suggestion's probably going to be prior to the next commissioners meeting, but that's a.
More than a day.
That's a day meeting, sure isn't it?
Correct. So that's not going to work.
We need to talk, we need to figure that out so we can get this worked out. Old business. Old business is a tabled E911 request. What's your pleasure?
Like to make a motion to support.
Just to take it off the table?
Or take it off the table.
We have a motion by Mrs. Graham Rosa to take it off the table. Is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second? Fails due to a second. So at this time, the council's pleasure is to leave it on the table.
That's what happens, yeah.
Yes.
So we'll look at that again next month. Appropriations transfers and requests, Criminal Justice Committee Chairman requesting additional appropriation from ARP for scheduled visits, for focus groups, for DuSable, Black History.
Desable.
Desable, I'm sorry, butchered that.
It's okay.
History Museum and Education Centering on $4,000.
Mr. President, I can make a motion to approve out of ARP 8950 or 8951?
Second.
We have the motion by Mr. Yagowski, second by Mr. Cunningham, is there any other questions or comments?
I have a question. The idea that we're taking this out of ARP when we have riverboat funding, and the riverboat funding was created to support the individuals from Michigan City that were displaced. I believe that instead of doing a one-time fee of $4,000, they should do $4,000 every year out of riverboat.
That would, that's, that's not the request before us, but.
This is, I'd like to address that if possible.
Sure.
I think this 4,000 is like seed money, and hopefully they will go to the Michigan City Council and ask for exactly what you suggested out of the riverboat money of Michigan City, which is set aside for disadvantage. So I think basically what they're asking, I believe, Mr. McCormick, is some starter funds so you can go to the Michigan City Council and say, we've already got a start, we're going to need more.
We're definitely going to the mayor's office and to the city council.
Thank you.
It will be the mayor's office first.
Right.
And if I just may add something to this conversation. Rodney McCormick, Chair of the Social Status of Criminal Justice. We have a plague in our community right now in Michigan City with young people and young adults committing crimes. We have done, I've seen nothing we have done to try to put an end to this. So I decided to, and my co-chair, Miss Stacy Benny, and Mr. Kelly, we're trying to do something about it. We need money to get it done. And just to make sure everyone here knows, this money will go straight to the controller's office in Michigan City. Every penny will be accounted for. Every person we spend, every person we help, every child that we reach out to and every adult, we will keep a list of those individuals. And if you want a copy of them, you're quite sure we give it to you, that's no problem. We all need to do our part. I think we have three at-large members up here, and we got Mr. Yagowski and Mr. Novak, your district runs right through Michigan City. I, I, I see this as an opportunity for us to bridge the gap of communication. Nobody, we don't come and talk to y'all, you don't come and talk to us. And when I say us, I'm talking about in the black community. This is a social status of African-American males. That's what I'm here for. And just so everyone here knows that we've changed our bylaws to also people from the county can sit on our board. You can get, you can, they can get appointed to our board, but each and every one of you and anyone else can join our subcommittee. You don't have to be nothing special, you can just come in and join. This has been a win for me already. I've been able to open the lines of communication up with Mr. Yagowski, Mr. Novak. Mr. Cunningham has also been instrumental for years, so I ain't going to give him too much more credit. But Randy, it's been a pleasure speaking with you, talking to you and hearing the issues that we have in the black community. And we are for law and order, more so than most people think, but we also have to do our part.
How could I ask you one question that, let's say you take 20 kids to the Desable Museum. I'm not asking you bring all 20 of them, but I would think at some point, time, bring a few of those individuals back in here to address the council as to the effect that trip had on them.
I don't have no problem with that, I just have, we just have a committee that we have to run it by.
Sure.
So I can't speak for everyone, but I see no problem with that at all. And like I said, the door is open, you come past, criminal background check, any of you guys can come and join. I hope this is not a one-time vein coming to this board. I agree with Mr. Graham Rosa, which I was totally surprised that she said that. Whether you like it or not, Michigan City is the largest city in our county. And we haven't been coming here because we feel like we've been ignored. So the lines of communication has opened, and I want to thank you for that, Mr. Novak. And with nothing else?
No, I have a comment. Don't mind. Mr. McCormick, first of all, thank you for bringing it to us. And if it's not feasible to bring them here, I think a few of us would welcome the opportunity to go to a meeting and sit with these young men or women and just have a, just a discussion to see how well, and then see where else, have a future discussion on what else can be done in the future. So thank you for the start.
I too. So the ARP funds is also designed for helping inner-city people and other things like that, so both of them are equal. And I love Mrs. Graham Rosa's idea of funding this more in the future, but that, but the request we have right now is for the one, so we'll deal with that one now. But hopefully we can look at that in the future. Is there any other questions?
Lastly, just remember, in order for us to be successful, we have to keep the lines of communication open. And we have to talk to each other, not scream and yell and call each other names and ask questions that not even relevant to what we're here for. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next one, item is Superior IV requesting additional appropriations from Riverboat Problem Solving Court position in the amount of 48,500. Stan is here tonight to talk on, oh no, Stan's not talking. This is the second half, they received, I'll speak on their behalf, I guess, if they're not here. They received funding from the Healthcare Foundation, the fiscal year is my understanding, fiscal year is, it starts in October. This is the second half of that, so they're asking for our help because they got half the funding. And they are in the talks with, doing some more for the, towards other projects and stuff.
Mr. President, I can make a motion on a general account, 1,000 for the 48,500.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Yagowski, seconded by Mr. Rosenbaum. Only question.
What?
He said.
General.
1,000. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item is La Porte County Emergency Management, last month we did a motion of support for the 11,680.
Motion to approve.
Stay there. Motion by Mr. Cunningham.
From?
This is for the Siren in Westville that got moved, we did a motion to support last month, then we just have to appropriate the money.
Riverboat 1191.
Second.
Two or three months ago.
Second.
All right, second by Mr. Yagowski. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item is La Porte County Community Corrections requesting additional appropriation. This was also, last month was a motion of support for the Tech 84 Service Agreement. And then since then, they're coming to us for Security Automation System, Exterior Cameras in the amount of 10,566. Would you like to introduce yourself?
Yes, my name is Marika Beatty, interim Director of Community Corrections.
Welcome.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to pay Tech 84 Service Agreement of 8,500 and the Security Automation Systems Exterior Cameras, $10,566 out of the Riverboat Fund.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, seconded by Mr. Mullenhour. Are there any questions?
A question, please.
Question.
The Security Automation System, this is a pretty complex system, is there, what's the type of service and warranties? And is there any fees to do any of those things?
Is there an ongoing service agreement?
Usually there is, that's what I'm asking.
This is in addition to the.
System is there?
System that's already there. I think a couple of months ago, you all had approved for, it's like $118,000 for our overhaul of our security system.
Correct.
And then four of our cameras went out, so this is just in addition to.
Just replacing cameras.
Correct.
Nothing's changed as far as having, because some services that you have to pay more, so.
No, nothing has changed, they're just adding those cameras.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Great. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
May I approach?
You should, you may.
Okay.
Didn't know we had handouts with your conclusions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon.
Thank you.
So we had a change in guard recently, and so I think this just got, was an oversight. It was supposed to be placed on the agenda, we were just approved by the commissioners to come before you to establish an overtime budget and a payout for our current comp hours for our employees. We're losing a lot of employees because of the comp hours. They're getting a lot of comp hours, but they're not able to take the comp hours, and they're not getting paid for it. So I'm just asking for a motion of support to establish an overtime budget of 20,000 and a payout for our current comp hours totaling $40,455.35 below the residential officer balances. Those are the balances that are currently in those accounts that we could pay that money out of. So I'm just asking for a motion of support.
So just to clarify, you have the funds to pay it?
We have the funds to pay the 40,455, but we do not have the funds for the overtime budget.
And then you'd like to establish a $20,000 overtime budget.
Yes.
Mr. Yagowski.
Is there going to be, because in a lot of departments, we have max-type thing, because is this going to be something that adds up to quite a bit at some point? Or are we just going to keep it limited to a certain amount of overtime?
We're going to try our best to keep it limited to a certain amount. 80 hours of comp time is supposed to be the cap right now.
I'm sorry, how many?
80 hours. But due to staff shortages, we're unable to cap it at 80 hours.
I understand that, but in the future, you're going to have it capped out overtime somewhat?
Yes, and we would also like to model after the Juvenile Services Center, where employees are offered comp time at the beginning of the year or overtime, so they could choose.
So is that just a transfer of funds?
That's just, well, it'd be, it'd be a transfer for the 40,000, correct, Mr. Auditor?
Don't ask for the overtime, you had the money already to pay, right?
Right, it would just come out of our established salary budget right now.
But is, those are not, are those 100 accounts that were transferred? We've got to keep it in, we're going outside a 100 account, we've got to advertise it. So we may need to advertise, so she's asking for a motion of support, and then she'd be back on the agenda next month.
Fair enough, it didn't add up to me, so I was asking, okay.
Yeah.
At our meeting today with Community Corrections, the way it sounded, why, she's pretty sure that it is in the 100 account because of the shortage out there and the money's been there and they haven't been able to fill some positions, so.
Yeah, so, members of the council, we looked at this a couple of months ago, and they were short a number of positions, so that's where this money is. But I'm not sure what account number it is. And remember, they had a number of employees that were short, so they already had those funds budgeted at that time. And they weren't paying employees, so that's where you have these funds.
If we had verification that those were, those four accounts were all 100 accounts.
I'd like to make a motion in support and extend it to a motion to go ahead and transfer if they are 100 accounts, contingent on them being 100 accounts.
All right, motion by Mr. Cunningham, seconded by Mr. Yagowski.
And I would defer to your judgment as to which one of the accounts you want to transfer from.
And just for clarification, that does include a motion of support for the overtime budget that we'll set up next?
Correct.
Correct. All right, both of you have a question?
Real quick, I forgot, Mr. Mullen, you're on the board, so can we work on something that we have like a maxed-out overtime, so we don't, it doesn't become a problem for us policy?
Right.
If they haven't done it, we need a policy. Thank you.
If I might comment on one aspect, I'm not commenting on the request by any means, that's up to the council. But broadly speaking, I would just make, seek to make you aware that there's been a number of requests around overtime payouts now. And my concern from broader financial planning perspective is that we be aware that we may have a Katie bar the door. Not commenting on this request specifically regarding overtime requests. And the council may want to start thinking about a more broad systematic affordability question on whether or not other department heads are going to be saying, we want to do payouts too, or what have you. So that's a natural notion of fairness or whatever for departments, just I bring it up.
Great, thank you. Any other questions or comments on this?
Yeah, I'm going to make the comment, that this is unique circumstances where these people have been working tremendous amount of time, a lot of overtime, like you said, because you're still short on staff, and hopefully that's going to get corrected soon. That is the reason why I believe I would vote in positive favor of this, and not as a general statement that this is, we're going to take a paintbrush and just say, everybody can do it. And I do understand the point.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. One other, one other, and before you go. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Thank you. One other, one other, and before you go, since you're here. Would you like to give us an update, the commissary fund that they have on, on the changes that were, you and I have been talking about, just give a brief update on.
So, when you, when you look at the statute, there, there's really no, um, line item for Community Corrections to have a commissary fund. So, we're thinking, the, the Sheriff's Office in and of itself has a commissary fund. So, we're thinking about potentially having to move the commissary fund for the, for the Community Corrections under the Sheriff's Fund as a sub-fund. It'll still be their monies, but it'll have to go under the, the Sheriff's Department.
So, so that's something that we're in the process of getting done. You'll still be able to spend the money, but it's, it's just gonna be housed. I, I was gonna use the word supervised, but the sheriff's looking at me, staring me down back there, and I think his hand's on his gun. I'm not sure. So, it would, it would be under there just so that we're in compliance with the state and everybody, so. Anything else, Mr. Marquino?
No, uh, the deputy auditor said that there's an ordinance from two thousand and five, but I still don't believe that that meets the statute. I think, I think it still needs to go under the Sheriff's. But I will look at that ordinance. You know, we've had a difficult time with ordinances that have been floating around for years.
Right, right.
But we'll, we'll clarify that.
Alright, I just wanna bring everybody up to speed on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Yes. Next item, we took care of with the part.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We didn't take care of it.
Yeah.
Motion by Mr. Cunningham, seconded by Mrs. Graham Rosa. This is his request to fund the full-time position, a part-time to full-time position that we created last month. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Community, uh, Lepore County Community and Economic Development, request an additional appropriation from ARP, both accounts for sharing, Share Foundation and for Sharing Meadows Residence Community, uh, for expanding broadband into that area, correct?
Correct, Mr. President. Good evening, Tony Rodriguez, Director of Community and Economic Development here. My pleasure to be here this evening and share with you this request that was presented to the county Commissioners approximately three weeks ago with a unanimous favorable recommendation to approach you council members with this, uh, uh, very familiar, uh, theme and request. And that is access to broadband available speeds for connectivity. It is truly, um, I thought what I could do is just very quickly, uh, explain why we're here before you this evening, and that is the, uh, the Office of Community and Economic Development, along with the Lepore County Rural Broadband Task Force, uh, is still celebrating very actively, almost on a daily basis, the successful unserved app, grant application to the Office of Community and Rural Affairs. Um, the, the great news for Lepore County is that, uh, a very aggressive, private, uh, approach was taken to solving our unconnected connectivity problem. Uh, we know that when there's more than one vendor, that creates a healthy environment for the customer. In the case of this request before you this evening, not only is there not one vendor, well, there, it's, it's that simple. There, there's, there are just no available options for this request. And it did not fit into, uh, and was, not that it was overlooked by the petitioners to, to, uh, include in the grant, but the math didn't work to get there. So, we have before you, and what I'd like to do very quickly is introduce to you Mr. Bill Harmon, the Executive Director, to tell you, uh, just very quickly, uh, a little bit about the Share Foundation, and then I will wrap up in summary. Uh, and we're, of course, here to answer questions as well.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, Tony. Uh, so, my name is Bill Harmon. I'm the Executive Director of Share Foundation, um, an organization that isn't just the leprechaun hunt, which is on August seventh, by the way. Um, so, we're an organization that serves adults with intellectual disabilities, founded by longtime pastor of Sacred Heart Church in Michigan City, Father Dennis Blaney. Father had a dream that after, after, uh, one of his masses, a family came up to him and said, and they had a son with Down Syndrome, and they asked him, what is there for my son? There really wasn't much. And especially, you know, like many of us in Lepore County, we take pride in living in a rural environment, and we can get away from city life and have the beautiful sandhill cranes that pass by. And that's what Sharing Meadows is. We have a hundred and eighty-five acres of what was undeveloped farmland forty years ago that is developed into our own little community of fifteen homes where thirty of my dearest friends live. They each have their own home with another, uh, with a live-in caregiver, and then they live with a housemate. Um, and so, real quick, what really got us on this journey for internet was really in twenty twenty when we had to lock everything down in order to keep my friends safe from COVID. So, when many of us around the world were adapting, we were working from home, we were able to see our families through Zoom, my friends didn't have that opportunity. They didn't have internet. And so, I said to my team, and my team looked back at me and said, we have to find a way. And, and so, we call it the missing piece. We have a long, extensive waiting list, and we look to expand. We have a new education program that has college professors actually teaching my friends with intellectual disabilities, something they never dreamed of, and yet, they can't go home and study. They can't log on and have that connectivity, and it's really a quality of life issue. We have an entire little city of Sharing Meadows with fifteen homes, our own little community, um, that isn't being served. And so, I appreciate you allowing me to be here today to support my friends and to speak on their behalf and to consider this opportunity, um, this really life-changing opportunity. As our people age, we're building a senior center so that they can retire on our property, and then we're bringing in younger people to be able to serve. But I'm here to tell you, if we don't have internet, then these people who want to live in the rural setting won't come to Sharing Meadows because they're used to what? Watching their Disney Plus, they're used to watching Netflix, they're used to being able to see their families via Zoom, they're used to being able to be connected to the world. And that inclusivity is something that we're asking for you and from you, um, for the community and for my friends. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gauske.
Couple of things, Mr. President. I'm well aware of what, uh,
Sidebar.
Sidebar. Tony, sit down. Please. Um, a couple of things here. We, we, we walked into relationships with this before, not just this particular thing in the past, where there's a billion dollars of money being allocated. I'd have to have a support where this, where everybody's gonna go after that money. There's, there's money that's available, one billion dollars. So, we have to apply for those things, not just simply say, county coming to it. Two, we pay a hundred forty-two thousand. There's a companies that come in here and supply that. They're getting paid for it. Where's the county getting for it? You're paying an outside vendor, but you're not paying it to the county. I know the importance of it, and the last of it is, uh, there is Wi-Fi available. Why haven't we used Wi-Fi yet?
So, to, to give, to speak to your last example, so, we actually approached Comcast. And I said, can you, what can you do for us? You know, is there something you can do? And they said, yes, absolutely. Uh, but you need a six-year deal for sixty-five hundred dollars. A private, you know, a private nonprofit that's, that, uh, doesn't receive, you know, we don't, uh, take tax dollars for our, for our operations. You know, it's, it's difficult because how can you accommodate for sixty-five hundred dollars, right? It's just astronomical.
I know you have your different groups out there, so you can have a little Wi-Fi hotspot type. You can get those over there, Verizon, anywhere you want, and, and you can hook up to it. And that, that pod that you have out there, 'cause I've been out there, could actually use the Wi-Fi out there.
What do you use now?
Nothing. And then in the office, we have.
Did anything else?
We have satellite, yeah. And it's, and it's not, it's not acceptable because it's.
I agree with satellite, but Wi-Fi, don't, do you, we look at Wi-Fi from Verizon or any of those groups?
I don't fully understand the, the question of.
MiFi. So, anyway, there, there, I'm just, we, we don't wanna jump into something that, first of all, you need, the groups need to go and find out if we can get some more of that money from the state, 'cause that's where, we're not jumping into it right now because there's gonna be one billion dollars of money for the state of Indiana. And we think we would go, we're gonna ask for our fair share of it. And again, two, um, this company's gonna make money, we're gonna pay into it for another company to make money off this deal. So, how's that work?
And, and what I just, what I just respond with is that, you know, this is a community full of people who have.
I go out there all the time.
Live in Lepore County and, and they're asking for service.
Could you check with MiFi and see if we can put those in, in each pod you have, and you're, and those are a lot cheaper to use in services?
And that's MiFi, you're saying Wi-Fi.
The Verizon MiFi. It's like a Verizon or an AT&T, it's like a cellphone.
No bigger, no bigger than this. You can, you dial in. Alright, Mr. Rosenbaum.
I'm not against it.
No, I was going to ask the question about, have you tried the MiFi's? Because I find, I use mine in many different locations and whenever I travel, so I thought.
And it's acceptable, it seems. I, I'll be honest, I haven't. That's, that's one thing.
I've had trouble with Comcast, um, when school's in session, and so, my Comcast nearly dies at three o'clock every day, and I have to switch over to the MiFi.
Sure.
So, but then I do live in the city. I do not live outside the city, so I don't know without asking the question.
Exactly, and I haven't, so I haven't specifically looked at this option. However, I know as, as an AT&T cellphone, um, carrier, sometimes when I'm in my office, I actually have to go outside. But that's not, that's certainly, I'm not making an excuse. I'm happy to, to look at that option, sure. But that's something to keep in mind, that when you have the trees and you're out in the middle of nowhere, um, it, it can be difficult. And that's why we still use Frontier, you know, it'd actually be significantly cheaper to just get cellphones for each house compared to using those lines. However, um, our, our personal cellphones, the staff, sometimes it doesn't, it doesn't work.
The service out there is not.
It's, it's not the best, no, for sure.
And I think that probably gonna affect the MiFi's the same way.
It might very well, but I just don't know without asking.
Yeah, of course.
So, I have a question. This, we're servicing a community here. For the hundred and forty-two thousand dollars, what, what are you looking at getting a hundred and forty-two thousand, right? What are you looking, what, what is that gonna give you guys?
Sure, so that gives us the acceptable broadband to our office so that my office staff can be able to continue our mission. A lot of fundraising is virtual nowadays, right? So, when I fundraise, I have to sit at my home, because that's where I have better internet. It'll supply internet to the fifteen homes so that they can be fully connected. We have a large camp building that serves two hundred and fifty adults with disabilities every year, so it'll supply that. We have a senior center that's per, that's, that's built, that when our people retire, they will move to that, so that will connect there. We have a guest house that when families are discerning if they want their loved one to live at us, to live with us at Share, or they're visiting, it'll connect that. We also rent that out for some little income, um, when we have Notre Dame football games. Um, and then we also have a, a maintenance shed that that will supply so that our maintenance man, um, is able to connect as well.
So, this is a one-time fee?
That's it.
Okay.
Yep.
Out of curiosity, uh, I thought I heard you say.
I, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Councilman, but in that packet there, it really is, there is a, uh, an aerial that shows.
I know where it's at. It's right down the street from my farm.
It's, it's that green line, the infrastructure, that's what that, that dollar amount.
I think it's a wonderful program.
Winners. It's the company, their individual efforts to find the, the lowest-cost vendor to provide them, uh, and accept something that they could afford. And we, we did invite the vendor here this evening, who was kind enough to attend, that may be able to just quickly address how they can't, uh, justify making the expenditure and providing service. And, and it, quite frankly, it's the, it's the challenge across the entire United States that we're facing here with this one request. We do, however, we hope, just as Councilman Gauske mentioned, we're anticipating a, a, a future substantial access to broadband, uh, funding through the federal government. The state is right now very pleased that we were successful in the OKRA funding. They're more, they're, uh, they're also extremely pleased that we have a broadband task force. They're looking to us to recommend the solution at the local level. So, this is one of those first baby steps in finding the solution to start filling the gaps.
Great. Um, is there's a question on Zoom?
I have a question for, um, the Director. I wanna make sure I understood this correctly. You said that Comcast would do, they would hook you up for all these buildings except it was gonna cost you sixty-five hundred a year for six years?
Yes, either that or they offered to put it in for three hundred thousand, as a matter of fact.
Okay, but they'll hook you up?
Yeah, sixty-five hundred a month is for six years.
That's not what you said. You said sixty-five hundred.
Sixty-five hundred.
What are we here for?
Seems like a pretty good deal, sixty-five.
That's what I was saying. Let's spend the thirty-nine thousand and take care of the first six years, 'cause something's gonna come along better.
Yeah, okay. Can, yeah, sorry for that.
Thank you.
Real quick, I'm Darlene. I think Darlene Hales on the, did you have your hand up, Darlene?
Yes, she has. She must have done.
Yes, I just wanted to say, um, for the county side, for the Verizon MiFi's, we do pay twenty-eight dollars a month per MiFi. Um, I'm sure it's more on the public side.
Fifty. Thank you.
And I would assume that they need one, at least one per household.
Per household, yeah.
And it's also spotty. Wouldn't you agree, Darlene, that sometimes when you're out there in rural area, it's a hit or miss? Because my Wi-Fi, I'm on Five Hundred East, and my wife, my MiFi doesn't work out there all the time.
I would agree with Councilman Graham Rosa.
I personally don't know the location, so I, I mean, I couldn't say on the service out there.
What's out in Galena?
They have an event coming up on August?
Seventh.
Seventh.
I already got tickets.
You should be there. Right, if you don't know where it's at, you should be there. It's a fantastic event.
Good food, too.
Mr. Gauske.
Okay, um, the only thing is, I don't know why the Commissioners didn't look into this stuff, but we have an agreement with, with the Comcast. I don't know why we couldn't negotiate with them because we're under contract with them for supplying service, and this would be new service, that I think we should be able to at least ask and see if there's any support from Comcast, 'cause, uh, if not, you know, we have a franchise fee that we receive from them. So, I'd like to see if there's something that Comcast could do for us. And it has to be negotiated through the Commissioners to talk to them about it, 'cause we're, we're under, we're under contract with them.
And we also receive fees from them. So, so my question is for the vendor. Is that, is that Bill? Come on up, Bill.
Bill, which is Action Communications.
Thanks. So, here, here's, this is the only some, and like Ms. Graham Rosa, I think it's an absolutely fantastic program, getting the internet out there to this community. The issue is, this is the way I compare it to, and stop me if I'm wrong. Be like me going to the bank saying, I want the money to build a rental house. And then, once I get the rental house, I'm gonna charge rent for it, but I don't have to pay the bank for it. So, you're the vendor. You get, you're gonna get a monthly fee.
Yep.
So, what are you doing to help them, since you're gonna be getting a monthly fee, to offset the hundred and forty-two thousand dollars? Do you see what I'm saying?
Right, no, no.
So, 'cause we don't have a problem putting skin in the game, but what are you doing to say, everybody's in this together?
Well, again, when we look at it, we're at the same boat Comcast is, right? You're, you're looking at three hundred thousand dollars to, to put the stuff out there, and you have to get a return. It's just like when you guys, let's say if you put in a, you know, water infrastructure or sewer infrastructure. It's not just paid for then, it's paid for on an ongoing basis, 'cause you've got costs associated to deliver the water, the sewer on it. So, it's not just a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and then it's done, it's free forever, right? You know, we pay taxes to the county on that fiber when it's in the ground every month. So, there's costs associated to that stuff, and you're at the ongoing cost of the internet connections that, that have to be paid. So, but this is what this program is set up for, for the, from the government. I mean, Verizon just got funded, I believe, seventy thousand dollars to hook up two houses out of the last government go-around funding. So, it's, it's.
Not, not from this board?
From the state of Indiana. That's, that's what I'm saying, the ARP money and the billion dollars that you guys are talking about that the state's got coming, that's what it's to cover. It's to cover these things that are just too expensive to build to get a return on the investment.
So, so let me throw this in, like I said, my issues are not with Sharing Meadows, so my.
Make anybody on the council.
No, and nobody has an issue with Sharing Meadows, we're just.
Right.
So, so what is, if, if Comcast is paying the county a franchise fee?
Right, just like we do.
You pay us a franchise fee?
Yep. Franchise fee is on TV. It's not on the internet connections. So, if I get Comcast internet, there is no franchise fee that's paid to the county for that. The franchise fee is only for the TV service.
The franchise fee is only for the TV service. So we provide television service as well. So any of our customers who provide, you know, we provide TV service to in Michigan City or Lepore, Lepore County and whatnot, there's a franchise fee that's paid to, let's say, Tomahawk Creek, Westville, things like that.
So can we figure out what that, so for this little community? 'Cause they're gonna be watching Disney Plus.
Right.
I agree. Could we figure out what that, so in other words?
To be honest with you, I'll tell you, if they just get an internet connection, the franchise fee is zero. Because again, if I get, if I do not get TV service, right?
So if they're streaming everything?
Right. So if I have Comcast and I do not get the TV package, if I just get internet and I stream my, my video.
There's no franchise.
There's no franchise.
There's no payback to the county. Mr. Yagowski.
So real quick, I, I've been watching these budgets for the last twenty years. I've got Comcast money coming. We don't have, we haven't, we haven't account for anybody from money, from any outside agency, maybe yours or anybody. We're not, we're not seeing it.
Okay. Should be in there, 'cause anybody who provides TV service has to pay a franchise fee.
All we get is Comcast.
Yeah.
And we have set up.
That's, that's why I asked.
Not saying, we have never seen it in twenty years, and I've seen it.
Okay, well, Mr. Graham Rosa.
So to the Director, you're saying that if you went through Comcast, they're gonna charge you three hundred thousand, but if you go through this vendor, he's gonna charge you a hundred and forty-two thousand?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a much, it's a much, obviously, it's a much better price, that's why.
So they're, we say, you know, they're asking us for, for less than what Comcast would charge them, so I think that they've already gone out and shopped.
Right, my issue isn't with them at all. My issue is with the vendor then receiving the profits throughout the life of whatever it is.
Right.
And, and, and the, and.
Unlike Comcast, we're not charging sixty-five hundred dollars a month. You know, we're charging like fifty bucks. So you take that fifty, you calculate that out as the number of years it's gonna take to get that money back. So like I say, you guys put water pipes in the ground, right? There, you, you know, I'm just saying if you did, right?
Yeah.
You've, you've got ongoing costs. You've got to maintain them, you've got to repair them, you have to upgrade them. So when you look at the, the money over time, you know, there's, there's money that goes into that stuff to keep it going. It's not all just going right to the bottom line.
But we also don't have people paying to put our water lines in for us and our service. So we're, you're asking us to put in our, how far down the road do you gotta come to get to Sharing Meadows?
I believe it's like one point three, one point four miles.
Is there any, is there any discussion, I had a discussion with another individual that lives just on the other side of the toll road.
Okay.
Is it possible?
Or the south side.
It would be towards twenty.
Okay. That's on the same side as Sharing Meadows?
No, it's on the other side.
Yeah, there's fiber to that point.
On the, on the, on both sides?
No.
If we did this, it'd be fiber on both sides?
Yes.
'Cause he was under the impression that he doesn't have anything, 'cause he's on the wrong side of the bridge.
You're talking about where the, this road goes underneath the toll road? Right, or the, the south shore, sorry.
I think it's a bridge.
It's actually.
There's a bridge right there, the toll road, the toll road.
Oh, you're talking, sorry, I think I'm sorry.
It's on page two of your, the handout.
The toll road.
What road are we on?
We're on the same road as Sharing Meadows.
Three hundred east.
Three hundred east.
You're not asking the question about turning off of three hundred east into Sharing Meadows, 'cause that's additional.
You're coming in off of a thousand north, is that correct?
Yeah, if, if, if you're talking about three hundred, north three hundred, right? We're, we're already under the toll road.
Are you coming in off of twenty or off of ninety-four, of a thousand north?
So we're coming off of a thousand, yeah.
So you're coming off a thousand?
Yes.
So you're already underneath the toll road, though, to the south?
We should be, yes. This is a project that we are just actually in the middle of doing. So it's quite possible that this person that you know over there hasn't gotten anything on this, because this part is, is not.
The reason I ask is because it does benefit other people in the area if we, we do this, so that, that's.
Yeah, we've, we've actually, around a thousand north in, in the Galena Township area and Rolling Prairie, I believe. You know, in this last year, we have spent about one point three million dollars putting fiber up there. Because again, they were an area where they didn't have anything out there. There's no Comcast, there's no. The wireless stuff doesn't work, the satellite stuff doesn't work, so this was one of the areas that, that we built. You know, and that's all with our money. None of it with state money or local money.
They, they were stepped up to the plate three times to pursue state assistance and were unsuccessful. In this last go-around, Comcast contested and then bid against and took an opportunity to compete and said they could do it for less. So that's the private sector attempting to work.
So you have five other neighbors right on that street, right, between?
I think there's like five houses between there and where.
Right. So have those five homes been asked to like, to see if they'll connect and then maybe pay a portion of it as well?
We, we have not contacted them, because when, when, you know, Bill came to us, you know, asked about this, we put him in touch with the county Commissioners and Tony to find out if there was something we could, you know, they could do. Because when we initially looked at it, it's, you know, almost a mile and a half out. There really isn't anything else over there.
But you are gonna pass those five homes and there's a very good chance that once we pay the one forty-two, then those five families could actually tie into it at, at a much lower rate. So right now, while the project is fresh, and we, we definitely wanna see that those residents be connected, but is it possible that maybe you guys can go, not back to the drawing board, 'cause I don't wanna see this drag on for a long period of time? I mean, I work with a lot of disabled individuals, and I know that it's really important that they feel the normancy that everybody else does, and that things that everybody else has, they want it too. And so with that being said, is it, is it something that you can take it back really quickly and, and try to get those five families and see if they would connect, that would lower the price, because then they would be coming up with a, a little bit of, of the cost?
Yeah, I mean, we could do that. I don't think it's gonna substantially change this, 'cause you're talking about roughly fifty bucks a month times five or six people. I mean, so it's.
But for us not to have to come up with the hu, the hundred and forty, you know, even if they came up with three thousand dollars apiece, then you're still lowering.
I see what you're saying, no. Trust me, we're building out this area, and when we tell people there's a hundred and fifty dollar install charge, they say no. So I can guarantee you, if we ask these people, which I will have somebody do, and you tell them you want three thousand dollars, I mean, they're, they're thrilled, because it's less than the sixty thousand that Comcast wants, but they don't have the money. I mean, generally speaking, like I say, a hundred and fifty bucks is something that's hard to get out of them just for an install fee, so. You know, I don't think we're gonna get three thousand dollars out of it.
Mr. Rosenbaum?
Yeah, I, I'd like to make a motion to move this forward, but please listen carefully, okay? First of all, the Commissioners have made this part of their ARP claim. So therefore, I'd like to move it forward not to exceed a hundred and forty-two thousand out of only the ARP eighty-nine fifty account. So it cannot come out of the lost revenue account. We're also going to urge and request that Sharing Meadows and also our, I'm sorry, Tony, I can't think of the, the name of your committee for available.
Lepore County Rural Broadband Task Force.
Broadband Task Force, that they too seek, that they too seek any funding possible within the next couple of years that's gonna be made available, and any funding that, that is received comes back to the county. And that is my motion.
If.
Mr. Rosenbaum, you have to make, stipulate that part and the fact that if it's available to come back.
If it's available.
Come back to the county.
Then it comes back to the county.
'Cause they're, the money they get might be, you know, tied to something specifically.
It has to be based on the broadband, okay?
Just to clarify, if I may, we, I was talking with our financial advisor today, we're gonna be completing our ARP report for the second quarter here this week. We, we have, as of stance, now up to eighteen point four million dollars of lost revenues, and that number's probably gonna go up as of the end of this year with the new lost revenue. So, and I don't have the exact number here, we're gonna be calculating that and doing a report this week. But there's certainly a few million dollars already worth of sewer and water projects, obviously, the, the major economic development projects around I-94 and all that. So I mean, then, I, I, there's, there's so much lost revenue that if you're saying, if you're saying that you only want to use.
I have been asking about lost revenue. When are we gonna get the calculation for the current year, and we have not seen it yet? So if you're now telling me there is a lost revenue calculation that's gonna put more money into the lost revenue account for twenty, for the second year?
You, you mean for the year twenty-twenty-two, or for?
For the, we got ten million the first year from lost revenue. And you're now telling me we're getting additional lost revenue for the second year?
There will, there will be lost revenue.
That, that was the number that he gave me today.
So, Mr. Rosenbaum, I, I think that the ten, I think that the, the ten million in and of itself, saying ten million, that was like something that people could take as a, you know, a deduct, a standard deduction.
There was, there was two K, two ways to get the lost revenue.
But we're not doing it that, we're not doing.
One was to just grab ten million and then forget.
We're not doing it that way.
Which we didn't do, because we were getting more than ten million under the lost revenue calculation for the first year. But then we were eligible to take it for the second year, and I've been asking about that, and it's for, and I have not heard.
The number's not ready yet, but I, I was in a meeting with Mr. Friedman and Mr. Sender and the folks from Baker and Tilly, and it looks like it's gonna be somewhere between seventeen and eighteen million dollars.
Okay, well, in that case.
But, but, but here's the thing, lost revenue, if we just use lost revenue, that's the, we know it qualifies for that, so we don't need to. It'd be, if we were pushing envelope on, on lost revenue on that account, then we'd be worried about it. But we know this qualifies for, for ARP, so just leave it at ARP.
Yeah.
Take it out of that.
And there's no, it's the same account, so.
If we don't, exactly. We know we have, it's a harder.
It's easier to spend lost revenue than it is the ARP account. We have to remember this. The, I mean, we wanna keep as much as possible.
Anything that's eligible, we want it to come out of the.
Absolutely.
The eighty-nine.
I just wanted to be clear that you weren't forbidding this from happening if, if the, if the regular ARP was used up, that's all.
If it's used up, no. I do not wanna forbid this from happening. I want it to first be applied there first.
All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Rosenbaum out of ARP with the stipulation stipulated.
Second.
Who seconded that?
Mr. Yagowski. In support from Mr. Graham Rosa and myself.
I heard a second, it's okay.
Discussion?
County?
Discussion.
Mr. Cunningham.
I wanna make sure I clarify that I heard this right. Verizon got seventy thousand dollars to do two homes.
In the last round, round of Okra Rans, yes.
Okay.
Two.
And we're gonna do fifteen homes for a hundred and forty-two thousand?
Right.
Sounds like a pretty good deal to me.
Closer to a total of about thirty-three homes altogether.
Well, thirty-three sites.
Correct.
Fifteen homes that we know are occupied by three people.
Right.
And additional sites for a hundred and forty-two thousand. By comparison, it's a tremendous deal.
So we have a motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, second by Mrs. Graham Rosa. Is there any other questions or comments? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. And what was the date of that event?
August seventh.
August seventh.
Can I take a?
Sharing Meadows.
Yeah, we need to know how to get, so don't leave.
You don't know how to get there?
No, no, how to get the tickets.
Oh, I was gonna say. After all that, you didn't?
Yeah.
All right, next item is the auditors requesting additional appropriation on Riverboat or ARP for legal fees in the amount of ten thousand dollars.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second for discussion.
Second by Mr. Yagowski, motion by Mr. Graham Rosa, second by Mr. Yagowski. On the question.
I have no problem with making motion approve, but the approval would have to be based upon whether the outcome of the current litigation.
I, I understand from talking to some council people that there might be a desire, frankly, to table this, I.
I'd table, we're not tabling it.
Uh, I'm sorry, what?
We're not tabling it.
Okay, okay.
We could. We could if you want to.
We're gonna discuss it.
We're discussing it right now.
Okay.
I guess, in a nutshell, is what it is, is there's, there's a motion to dismiss. And until that motion to dismiss is heard, there was discussion among some people that we should wait and see what that outcome is before we move forward.
I, I appreciate that. I, I think the concern was there was a motion of support, of course, as discussed from the council, which I took, of course, in good faith, as any department head does around, around this issue, and an attorney was, was hired, attorney's been working. The attorney has not submitted any bills yet, admittedly, but as it stands now, the motion to dismiss, there's, we asked for the, the judge to either, with a discovery request, to either tell us that we can have fifteen days of discovery or ninety days. So the concern would be if she says it's gonna be a ninety-day process, then it'll be extended. We think it should be the shorter period, 'cause it's a simple determination of whether or not Attorney Friedman has standing legal to sue me personally versus sue the, the county. So we're hoping it quits a quick process. It may not be a quick process, so it, it remains to be seen.
Mr. Graham Rosa, is it okay if we have that condition we put, placed upon it?
Sure.
What did you put on it? That, on, on the outcome of the, of the judge's ruling, whether it, if it's going to be, if it's dismissed, then we aren't, then we, then we won't pay it. That, there's nothing to pay. If at point.
No, if, if it's dismissed, we still have to pay his le, legal fees.
Dismissed, if it's dismissed, it means that they have to file another lawsuit against him.
But he might, he has legal fees now.
If he has legal fees, then he just, all he has to do is just apply for those, that, that amount that he has. That's a small amount. That's, we're not talking thousands of dollars.
Then I, I, I personally questioned him, why are we appropriating ten thousand dollars for a hypothetical?
I believe to change it around, we just, we, we needed to talk about it, so.
My, my, my suggestion would be, based upon what you're talking about, is that if it's dismissed, that you pay the amount of the actual bill up to a certain amount.
But you could bring us that bill.
Right, right. But it would be nice if, if the person I hired, based upon the motion of support, you know, has a basis, well, he's gonna be paid. I mean, if this is dismissed, it means that, that we should have been sued as the auditor. That's what the judge is saying.
So in reality, we, we're kind of in agreement that if we give you a motion of support, that we're gonna pay the legal fees that you've got to get it dismissed. Your attorney knows he's gonna get paid, and then we just table it. We'll give you a motion of support and table the amount until next month. So that cure your problem?
Well, I think so. I think there was a motion of support a few months ago, but maybe it wasn't clear that that was specific.
There was no financial.
Okay, very good.
Right, it wasn't a dollar amount.
Acknowledged.
So is that, are you altering the motion now?
I'll have to ask her to withdraw her motion.
I'll withdraw my motion.
I would make a motion of support for the intent that you're not eating this personally, and your attorney will be paid, but we table this until next month.
So that's a motion to table?
Correct.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Second. Second by Mr. Yagowski. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
I wanna make sure I clarify that.
It's tabled. It, we don't, uh.
Well, but you, there was no discussion.
You can't have discussion.
But I think you misread what I said. I wanna include the motion of support, Randy, that's what I said.
And I, it's in there.
Okay.
Right, it'll, it'll be in the, it'll be in the minutes.
Right.
I got you, Mr. Cunningham. Uh, next item is Lepore County Health Department requesting to spend a non-reverting funds for sealing HVAC and lighting in an amount of one hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, second by Mrs. Graham Rosa. She was here last month talking about it, or Mr. Mullen, or lit it out of the bag last month, I should say. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you're doing.
We wanna see pictures when it's done. Next item is Lepore County Clerk requesting to transfer from fund. She's transferring from one fund to the janitorial service fund, the meals and precinct board funds, and the polling place funds. These are all election-related.
Motion to approve?
Second.
A motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, second by Mrs. Graham Rosa. And those amounts that she's transferring is twelve hundred and ninety dollars, four thousand four hundred and seventy-six dollars, and twenty-four hundred and ninety dollars. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Next item is Lepore County Animal Shelter requesting additional appropriation from Riverboat or ARP for the part-time pay. He was asked to come back for this month, because he was, they'd been paying their part-time people out of donation funds, and it was determined by this council that that should be coming out of the, well, I guess, I was gonna say the general fund, but apparently we're gonna take it out of Riverboat or ARP.
Motion to approve out of Riverboat?
Riverboat or?
Second. I would have done general.
Have a motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, second by Mr. Cunningham?
So it was a general included.
Mr. Cunningham, did you second?
Yes.
Yes. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Next item is the Lepore County Sheriff's here for the one-third. At last month's meeting, we asked him for his allocation of gasoline, extrication, return of fugitives, jail overtime, and inmate food. of fugitives, jail overtime and inmate food. We asked him to split that up over the next three months.
Mr. President, motion to approve. Thank you.
Motion by Mr. Yagowski, second by Mr. Cunningham.
Out of Riverboat?
Yes, out of Riverboat.
Out of Riverboat. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
You have anything else you want to?
No.
Okay, thanks. Next time is La Porte County EMS requesting additional appropriation. This EMS was in the same boat. We asked them to come back over the next three months and...
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Mullenhour, second by Mrs. Graham Rosa and Mr. Rosenbaum. This is for an allocation for fuel, a corporate, which is non-reimbursable, medical supplies and other ops. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item is family advocate...
From where, we're, we're sorry, from where again? Apologize.
Riverboat.
Thank you. Next item is family advocate requesting a motion of support to cover the costs associated with supervised visitation, the amount of $25,000.
So if I approach to get this to you?
You have a motion by Mrs. Graham Rosa, is there a second? Second by Mr....
You can give us the handouts.